Okay.
At the MTA conference.
Oh, you were there today?
Lengthy discussion with DTE.
DTE.
About solar panels.
I'm kidding.
Okay, I'll call to order the April 26th meeting of the Groveland Township Planning Commission.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out to tonight's meeting. I guess we will begin with our roll call. Janelle, please.
Benzing.
Present.
Newville.
Present.
Shane.
Yes, ma'am.
Lachlan.
Here.
McKay, here. Willis, here. Christopher, here.
All right, as to the commission, we have, I guess, a trio of higher meeting minutes. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to peruse those. I guess what I would propose is that we just go through them sequentially. And I would invite.
I make a motion that we accept the approval for the regular, I'm sorry, March 22nd, 22nd meeting minutes.
Second. A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All in favor, motion carried. Forgive me.
I make a motion for our April 6th, 2020 minutes, approval of those minutes for a special meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Again, motion carried. Thank you.
And I'll make a third. But we have approval of the minutes from the special February, April, forgive me, 12, 2020 minutes be approved.
2022?
22. Did I say 21? I don't know.
A second.
That's a shame.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion approved. That brings us to a review of tonight's agenda. If anyone had a chance to review that, I would entertain a motion to approve that at this time.
I make a motion, we approve today's agenda for April 26, 22.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion approved. So with regard to the aforementioned agenda for tonight's meeting, I guess the first item up for discussion is communication and notices, item Agenda 8. Initially, with regard to training, I would invite comment from Janelle, because I wasn't told there was anything specific that needed to be addressed other than the obvious.
No big deal. Honestly, some of that information is going to be in the packet that you have in front of you. There's also a book that I sent in front of you, John, that has some additional information about some of those opportunities for you. So maybe afterward, if you guys wanted to thumb through that, but just because we are members of MTA Online, you are able to access a lot of those. And it's free for many of those programs, not all of them, but a lot of them. I know that there are some trainings that are in the actual packet itself, but you may want to just thumb through that additional booklet there.
Thank you. And obviously, what caught my attention, you know, solar energy is obviously part of the green energy movement. But what was, what was at least put in the, in the training solicitation here was that nearly every jurisdiction in Michigan will be approached about a solar installation within the next five years, which is, you know, right around the corner. Personally, I don't know a lot about solar, solar energy systems, benefits, risks, costs. So it's good to have this available. So thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
Can I thank you too? Thank you very much.
Moving to the next item on the agenda, agenda, I'm sorry, that would be the Fishbeck email. This was, I guess, an addition, a late addition to our last meeting, I believe it was held April 12th, just with regard to our recommendation to the township board that Fishbeck be retained. I guess the emails that followed the meeting, which were included as part of our packet, packet are, again, self-evidencing. Any thoughts or concerns or questions regarding that?
Chairman, just the point of information that is included, just so that you all are aware that that did go to the township and wasn't approved. So that's what that email.
Okay. I was just gonna say that, Janelle. Thank you. And, and it was subsequently approved by the township board. Okay, wonderful. All right, I guess I would propose at this point, we have Mr. Zalinski here. I'm gonna kind of shuffle the agenda a bit. Janelle said it's okay for me to do that.
If it's not, you just throw in another button. Yes.
Just for your benefit, sir. Thank you for coming. I understand you're with, with RV Park, correct?
Or RV Park.
The ORV Park, correct. So I guess what I would, what I would propose, unless anyone's opposed to it, is just to slide the new business in front of old business, the Renaissance Festival. You know, status update is gonna warrant some additional discussion. And so if we could turn to you to.
Let me do so, but I don't want to take action from Kim.
No way. Yeah, she can kick you.
Come on.
So I wanted to come before all of you tonight, only because last year, for Forefest, came in and got my use permit, of course, which we will obviously do again, a couple of changes to the event this year that I think weren't being brought up early, and I came, stopped by and saw Bob and brought that up. We are adding a competition event to that. Alongside that competition event will be two types of competition, and it's a demonstration competition, not an actual sanctioned racing event, but nonetheless something neat for the community to see. Two points to that. One of it will be that the all-new electric vehicle Ultra4 Racing will make its debut at Detroit Forefest. Kind of a neat deal, will bring a lot of national attention to that, only because it's a really big deal in the racing community. I think the part that's most important to bring up this evening, though, is the idea that there will be two occasions each day for about 20 minutes where there's gonna be engine noises. It's six vehicles, and there's engine noises, not with the EVs, because immediately, Mr. Christopher, you were looking at me like, how the EVs make noise? This will be traditional ICE internal combustion engine vehicles. That will be demonstration competition as well. Those vehicles will make noise on two occasions each day, tentatively have it planned at noon and three in the afternoon for about 20 minutes. Seems as though the park has largely overcome many of the concerns in the community revolving around noise and other things. I don't think that this is gonna represent any kind of noise necessarily that much over and above a typical weekend day at the park, but I also have an obligation as part of this community to bring it up and make sure that, that I put that in front of both of you first.
So any thoughts on what DB levels you might be getting out of those vehicles compared to what the limits are?
Yeah, well, currently, 94 to 96 is the range accepted by the state, and these are about 102.
Are you, describe two events, two competition events?
Two competition events. I bring up the EV thing only because we were having conversation about electric power and things and so on. Those will be run separately. Obviously, those make absolutely no noise, with the exception of, you can hear rocks come off trailers if you're close enough. So they're extremely quiet, but it will be two forms of demonstration competition out there at that moment. One is EV, the other is traditional, you know, gas-powered engines.
And these would be scheduled, like, highlight events on given days?
Both days of the event, those competition events are for about 20 minutes. Obviously, they have to start them a couple of minutes in advance, so there is some noise associated with them starting it, but certainly nothing that even resembles anything offensive at that moment. But under competition conditions, they can, you know, register 102 decibels plus or minus, depending on which one it is and what they do. So that's why I felt that it was important to bring it to everybody's attention early on and, and address that in a very forward fashion, as opposed to the beg for forgiveness type of approach to these things.
With the size of the park and the distance from road, distance from houses and whatnot, where's the competition gonna be held? Is there a place lower in the park or further from the road, you know, where I'm getting, where we'd have more sound buffering?
Excellent point. And to that end, we're going to be the start of the competition, and the vehicles will only go out two at a time, which minimizes that level of noise also, rather than all six of them, obviously, to make a lot less noise than six. But we will start the competition at the lowest point in what's called Holly Glen in the park. And so a lot of that noise won't escape the immediate surrounding area, but when they're out in the park, there are occasions, and I was at the park both days this weekend, and you can hear various vehicles in the park if you are attuned to such things. And, and so as the person who has created this event, I have an obligation to bring it to your attention in advance.
Thank you. What are the, are there scheduled dates already for Forefest?
Yeah.
Looks.
Being that the electric vehicle racing, that's probably gonna be, it sounds like it's getting national publicity to your point. What is your expectation in terms of traffic in that area? Are we going to have an issue like other venues in terms of traffic, you know, whether it's on Dixie Highway or someplace else? You know, people getting in and out? What's your thoughts on that?
Very real concern. Fortunately, the fact that there's been a road constructed from the Mount Holly ski resort, obviously, you drive in that ski resort, the road that goes through there, I'm sure you're aware of that, has eliminated most of our traffic concerns in that regard, because that's more than a half a mile of ways that we can have two-lane traffic going in and a single lane coming back out. So from that standpoint, we've addressed that. I currently have an agreement with Mount Holly to utilize that. The county, the Holly Oaks ORV Park is not using that parking lot this year, because it was expensive, but I've made a separate agreement with Mount Holly to continue to use that parking lot as well as the drive that goes through there. So last year, we really didn't have any time where traffic was backed up. Obviously, Kathy and I need to continue to talk about the fact that Renaissance Festival was taking place at that time as well, and certainly, that's always a good bit of traffic, but fortunately, ours comes in pretty early and seems to not cross paths with those too much.
But being that this is, I assume that the electric vehicle events, the first time that you're having this, right?
With the EVs racing?
Right. So is there going to be expectation that you're going to get higher than what you typically have in the past with the Forefest? That's the point I'm trying to make is, and then with the timing and everything else, are we going to? Is there a, has there been some thought in terms of the estimated or anticipated number of attendees, including media or whatnot, that are going to be attendance in that given period of time? And is that going to, has that been understood or comprehended in terms of posing a problem to Dixie Highway?
It certainly has been considered. I am the eternal optimist at every chance that I can, because I produce events, so that's what us people do. In my happiest thoughts, I can't imagine that we're going to increase our attendance by that significant margin. We certainly will have increased media attention, but the number of media that will be attending will be in the tens of people or twenties of people, as opposed to thousands of people. The good news is, the way that the park is currently set up, we have a separate spot for media to enter and park. And there's selfish notion to that as well, because we want to make the media folks very happy and have a pleasant experience, because then they write nice things. But yes, that's all been considered. If we were to have five or 600 additional people attend the event, we average about two and a half people per car. Obviously, there's half people, but just, yes, it's kind of the average. So it's really perhaps a couple hundred extra cars over the course of the weekend. Pretty manageable.
Can I ask, what are the dates?
September 16th through the 18th.
So it is right on time.
What time are you opening, starting?
So we will open, we will open parking at 8:00 AM, allowing people into the park at 9:00 AM. The reason we opened parking early is because there are a number of people that bring vehicles that are on trailers. That gives them a time to get situated, get their vehicle unloaded, all that kind of thing prior to the actual event.
And the event will start at?
9:00 AM.
So actually moving, the cars are gonna be running around and everything at nine o'clock?
Correct.
Okay.
And then when, when would it wrap up? 5:00 PM. So it's all day.
Can I ask, you said that you were gonna have them do 20 minutes, and you were said you're gonna have two cars. So two cars are gonna go 20 minutes, and then another two cars are gonna go 20 minutes?
No.
Or five minutes or?
Two cars will go at a time.
Right.
The entire competition, so they're only racing one lap through the circuit that we've designed. The entire sum of competition will be 20 minutes. And obviously, that could end up being 21 minutes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. But I was thinking, if you were gonna go two cars for 20 minutes, two cars for 20 minutes, two, you know?
All of a sudden, that adds up to 60 minutes.
Yeah.
So now the, the sum of competition will be 20 minutes.
Do they have any mufflers at all?
Yes.
They do? All of them make 160 or 102 dB with a muffler?
Some of them. Some of them are less than that. I'd sure rather appear in front of all these folks and talk about that worst-case scenario, rather than.
Tom has been very upfront about things, and I suggested, why don't you just tell them early, so they know what to expect? And this is the first time I'm hearing what details are. My only question is, and this is why I'm bringing it up. When the park opened up one weekend, the Off-Road Club brought a guy in that had like a 700 horsepower open header stand rail in there. And when that guy ripped, everybody bitched about it, and I heard it, okay? And so I think the club that invited them's attitude was, yeah, go ahead, let them do it, just show them what it is, you know? And then it got everybody pissed off, and that's when we started clamping down with the DB meters. So I'm suggesting this is for some consideration. I, maybe, a couple of events that exceed the normal noise level for an ORV park is something you want to accommodate, but you need to think about how we position that to the community if they do complain. And one suggestion, and this is just a thought, if you could get a hold of a couple of those guys, maybe, and have them bring it out where you guys could hear what, I have no idea what it sounds like, you know? I can smell, I can't hear, so.
It sounds like a typical hot rod car that you hear. And I'm not trying to make light of this, but it's something that's like a hot rod car that you hear on Dixie Highway.
My Chevelle makes a lot of noise when I drive.
It does.
And, and the key, though, is what, what is the sound level at the entrance to the park, at the property line of the park? You know, again, it's the placement of the vehicles during the event, and if they're down low, far from property line, far from residents, you may not hear it versus a guy with a, with a 94 dB normal vehicle just motoring into the park. See the difference? If you had a DB meter at the property line, you could, you could, at least for information to us, say, here's, here's how it actually sounds as that sound is leaving the park.
I'm just suggesting that because the parks rules, that the park was approved down, is obtaining the DB levels that the state uses at their other parks.
Right.
If you feel that there's some latitude for variance on it, I'm suggesting, maybe you want to hear it first, and maybe it is a bit. The one that I know was a problem was a 700 horsepower machine with absolutely no amps. Okay? I mean, no mufflers at all, just straight pipes. And I'm only saying that because I need to know what to tell people if they call and say, why was it noisy for 20 minutes? If the answer is, well, you know, we didn't think it was unreasonable, it was in the middle of the day, and it's a limited event. You just, you need to determine what the policy is for the park, because otherwise, I could say, I don't know, you should go to the planning commission, don't we, right?
Yes, Jim.
And he's required, just so you know, that, that the county park, because these guys brought that one machine in there last time, said, going forward, every time it's not a county-sponsored event, the promoter, which would be Tom here, has to come before the planning commission to get special use for the event, and he's done that. And he's been, I think, extremely cooperative and upfront about it. And just suggesting, you need to consider this, so that I have some idea what the answer's going to be going forward. And one suggestion was, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe 100 or 102 dB with some mufflers isn't nearly as loud as 700 horsepower with completely straight pipes.
Well, certainly it's not. And also, too, how is the ordinance stated? Is it 102 dB standing at the vehicle, or is it 102 dB from the point of somebody is in the stands?
42 inches from.
42 inches.
They all got a DB meter with string or chain, and they got a hold of that certain angle, a certain distance, and certain throttle speed, and that's how they measure for the regular oil, so.
Okay. Jim, you had a comment?
Yeah, for everybody, if this will help, and Tom, help you. According to State Michigan, it's 90, 94 decibels. I don't know how far away.
It's about this.
That's 42 inches, but this is somewhat interesting. 100 decibels, according to a Purdue study, is a jet takeoff at 1,000 feet. Use of an onboard motor, power lawnmower, farm tractor, motorcycle, garbage truck, jackhammer. So if it puts it into perspective, a jet fly over at 1,000 feet, it gives at least some barometer of what could be expected compared to the study. Throw that in, so that we can think about it.
And Jim, one of the things to think about, when they say a motorcycle, I can show you currently at my business, three motorcycles, one of which, we can sit here and idle in this room and continue to carry on this conversation, and one of which is remarkably louder, so it's, it's hard to lump them all into one thing. Same point that I was making about the guy that came out there with the open exhaust, and I cringed on that one, because I knew that wasn't gonna be good news.
What made it worse was his attitude. They don't, they don't like it. Do a pint, not to, just tell them they're gonna have to deal with it anyway. I said, you're gonna like this.
Yeah.
Well, okay. Yes, ma'am?
I would ask that the cemetery be notified of the, the timeframes of the competitions themselves. That way, if we have a funeral, we are able to say, you know, hey, this is a competition going on. And it may be loud during this particular timeframe. It's been really great. You guys have emailed us the schedules. We've only had one funeral where it was really loud.
I'm happy to do that, of course.
But other than that, it just, it works for us that way. There's no surprises. We're the family that's up. I mean, we get it.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you for that. That's, that's insightful and appreciated. What is your name?
Chris Leckenstein. I'm president of the Board at the Cemetery.
Leckenstein? Leckenstein, okay, thank you. Just the fanatic Leckenstein? Thank you. Any other comments for Mr. Zalinski? I, I guess personally, just looking at the, the dates, of course, my concern goes to, as Angelo was touching on, the integration of traffic control and attendance.
Has it been scheduled already? I mean, was it publicized?
Oh, yeah. It's been the same date.
Third, third year, isn't it?
So, so Tom, have you, I guess, historically, you know, in the preceding three years, attendance, rough numbers, you guys have data that?
Yeah, of course.
So, so you have some expectation as to what you're gonna experience this year, even with, you know, the, the added events?
Yeah, and these added events, as I said, I don't, we don't anticipate that that's gonna be a huge draw in terms of additional participation from guests. It's more intended as a media-oriented thing to bring more attention to the event and be a content generation. But in answer to your question, if you're asking approximate attendance numbers, over the course of the weekend, about 5,000 people.
Each day or the three?
Over the course of the weekend.
Over the three days?
Yes. Friday being primarily media-only, with the exception of some charitable things that we do. It's primarily media on Friday. Consumer or, you know, spectator participation on Saturday and Sunday.
And has there been any prior experience with, you know, parking overflow issues or congestion in accessing or egressing from your, your parking spaces?
Absolutely. And fortunately, with the Mount Holly area being available to us, we've not ever found an overflow situation. With that said, I did make an arrangement with the folks at the Honn House that if we somehow had a situation, could we park some vehicles down there, and they were very accommodating in that regard. We never have done that, because there's never been a need.
But you're forward-thinking, and that's appreciated. Okay. Well, any other thoughts or, or questions for Mr. Zalinski? I guess this is more of an advisory meeting or appearance on your behalf for the benefit of the commission and those in attendance, so thank you for coming.
I just would, you know, to just strongly, strongly consider reviewing your contingency plan for parking overflow. Because I mean, I, I understand the Honn House, but then now you end up with another issue with people crossing Dixie Highway. So that becomes a safety issue. So it's, I just would, I get it, you've had it, and you haven't had a problem, but being that you're and I know that you're only anticipating a small increase potentially in terms of participants, but I just would go back and strongly recommend you review your contingency plan in case you do run into a problem, because with this being on top of Renaissance Festival and with us struggling with the problems in terms of the Dixie Highway flow to begin with, you know, we, we just need to make sure that, A, people are safe, you know, number one, and B, we're not, we're not exacerbating a problem, so.
Absolutely. Last year, and let's, entirely fair points to make, last year, I hired extra sheriff's deputies to help guide traffic. They seemed largely bored with that idea, because there just wasn't a lot for them to do, but far better that they be there to be bored than, than us having a crisis and not have them around to help. We do have the ability, if things get that busy, to use both ends of the park as entrances, and. We do have the ability, if things get that busy, to use both ends of the park as entrances, and
I don't think you're going to have a problem with that.
Don't either, but nonetheless, you got to think about this.
Yeah, just think about it.
We had a similar event that we put on in Minnesota last year, we ended up having to go to our contingency plan a couple hours into it, and and we were glad that we had that contingency plan in place because it kept everybody happy.
Yeah.
The flow of traffic, does it come in all at once, or is it throughout the day? You said it's open from eight, parking, and actual open at nine, but is most of the traffic come in early, or is it throughout the day?
Uh, the vast majority of the traffic comes early, stays for the day, and then departs. That certainly doesn't mean that at eleven or twelve or whatever, there's not some stragglers, hey, I had to do this in the morning, or the kids had a soccer game, or whatever it might be, but largely, people show up. I think because they're like, hey, you know, we paid to participate in this today, let's get all of our money's worth, we want to be there for the whole time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as I, and just to kind of wrap this up, as I understand it, as Bob touched on, the commission's role will be to, you know, review or consider the policy with regard to noise and parking traffic in connection with application for a special use permit for this year's event, correct?
And as I said, Tom has been very straightforward and accommodating and coming to me before about this, and I appreciate that. I'm just asking, I need to have some direction from you.
Right.
If you want to try this, is it going to be considered this year? Because I think once he makes a commitment, he's got to know if they can show up, turn on, and do it. Or are you going to have someone test it before then so you get comfortable with what it is? It might not be that big of a deal, I I don't know.
That's what I was going to ask.
And I just, I just need to know when people call and say, hey, I heard it, you, there's one guy.
That's what I was going to ask, is there any way, I mean, we've got some, we've got a little bit of time, is there any way that you can invite one of the vehicles that may be, you know, on par with who would be participating in this event? And they'll do a noise study from from the from the point of entrance, you know?
But two, you want two there, because they're going to have two cars racing.
Because it'd be, to your point, I think, the ambience. You know, people don't realize that you could stand on Holdridge Road at the end, and the noise level from the leaves rustling at the end of Holdridge Road, because it doesn't go through the expressway or over it, is about seventy-three dB in the zone, I've done it with a dB meter, so you you need to know, the line in the tires is off, the surface tire is high. So you you just need to, I think the better you do it at a similar time, and maybe at noon and three, nobody really gives a, this other guy.
At least in the middle of the week when the gravel train trucks are running.
That's going to drown anything out, so yeah. But no, I, you know, if we, that way we can at least, we've at least got something. Where if somebody does complain, you've got the study that says, hey, we we went, we did the due diligence, we have a DB study. Right, we conducted the study here, so they actually ended up, you know, so that way it it helps us to, in case there is a complaint.
And an interesting part about that is four motorcycles on Dixie Highway. And what, and I'm a motorcycle guy, so just for complete clarity.
With the cherry bomb exhausts.
But, you know, what that sounds like, and I think there have been occasions where that has been mistaken as noise.
When the park opened up after a few weeks and it wasn't open, a guy called me a mile or two into the township and swore he heard them damn motorcycles at that park, and there was nobody there. It was a Harley going down Dixie.
A two-cycle?
No, just a big old Harley, probably with a set of straight pipes going down Dixie Highway, and he swore it was the park, and I called back to John, I said, you guys have anything going on? Well, we haven't anything for three or four weeks. So I, you 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 do get that, and that kind of stuff I can deal with easy enough, I just.
And that's, that's the whole point, there's going to be people, certain people that are just sensitive because I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, there's probably certain people that just didn't want there in the first place, so they're going to find any little opportunity to complain, but by gathering the data and at least showing that, hey, we did the study, and it's appropriate, and they, they have no argument.
There's one individual that complained quite a bit about it the year that it initially opened up, and most of the other residents I talked to, frankly, they didn't really have a problem, even if they could hear a little bit. This guy was probably the, potentially the closest one, but when I got the park management involved, they met with the residents, they did some joint analysis and study and made some changes, and frankly, I haven't had a complaint since then, so I would like to keep it that way.
Yes, yes, and it's it's always.
I need to come in Monday morning, and I hate to look at the little red light on my phone.
And again, Tom, thank you, because we do have the time, we have the ability to, you know, discharge full de- um, due diligence to make sure that there are no issues, and and I guess we'll just wait for, you know, that invitation, uh, when the time comes.
How would you like me to schedule that, because I don't know what your feelings are, it it would more than likely need to be on a weekend when I could arrange to have two of them there, so I don't know if I can ask all of you together on a weekend and take time out of your weekend to do this, but.
I would suggest, I say, go through Danielle, and show it out to everybody, and you ought to get at least a pretty good.
And if we got the dB meter, we can get an independent check on it, and then all the board can have the data.
Stand up on a parking lot, which was.
Danielle, did you have a comment?
I I didn't have a comment, but just also along those lines, we have to be very careful about that because of the meetings, actually. So that would be considered a quorum if you were all together at that time, so that's a really sticky situation.
I don't know. I I would think that you would have to have
Maybe just one or two of us.
Well, that, or someone independent of the commission go and do the study, and then come back and bring it back to the planning. Then maybe at that point, we can have a special meeting here, you know, and then.
Although you have the data for the regular.
Right.
Yeah, because I, there's no, you're in September, so I mean, I I don't know what the, how much late time you need before you have the special permit, so.
We have time, though, for that, for sure.
Okay.
So yeah, so that's just something to consider there, because you would have to have a full-fledged meeting if you were all in attendance together.
Yeah.
I just, the other thing that I was just going to note, this is more of a resident suggestion, whatever the board does decide, you know, I think as a resident myself, knowing what concerns are in the community, one of the biggest things that helps people is awareness, and having some of that information beforehand, so if it is something that's accepted, being able to, you know, notify the community, hey, on these dates between of twelve and one, and three and four, you will likely hear additional noise, but if we can be a little bit more proactive about notifying the community, I think that we will, it would maybe just go over a little bit more smoothly, then what the heck is going on, it's so loud? So just a thought, and certainly here in the office, I I would be happy to, you know, put that information out there, and we can all share with the community, just something for us to think about. If if you guys did decide to, you know, allow something like that, where it went over those ninety-four to ninety-six decibels.
Would something like that go into, like, let's say, the citizen or something like what we typically get posted?
Um, I mean, I think that probably that would be more.
It could be, you know, the citizens mostly.
It really is. It's not that one.
There's no paper for the website.
So that's the thing, is how do you really get the word out? I mean, unless people are constantly checking your website.
Right, and and we could certainly post that, you're right, but at least there'd be some, you know, and and when people call after, if they call on the Monday and say, what was going on? Let me guess, it was between twelve and one and three and four, yes, they did have some prior authorization for that additional noise level, however, it's not a regularity, it was for a special event that they had, so you won't see that often, or you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just something for us to consider to really make the community aware, if you do have events like that.
Have a Facebook page?
Yep, and that's what I mean, we'd be happy, you know, I'd be happy to post it on there.
Yeah, there's, there's
Option.
Means and options for doing that, certainly, so, okay, any other comments, questions for Mr. Zelinski? Well, again, thank you on behalf of the commission for appearing tonight, being proactive and and upfront, we appreciate that.
Thank you for seeing me, I appreciate that a lot. Should I stick around?
Thank you.
This is why we advanced you on the agenda, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so then reverting back to the agenda, looking at item number ten now, old business, which is, I guess, just a a status update regarding this, the the progress being made by the Renaissance Festival with regard to our ongoing dialogue, Ms. Parker, Kathy Parker is here tonight, Kathy, thank you, it's a pleasure meeting you. Myself personally, this is the first time I've had the pleasure of meeting you, of course, Chip's here again tonight, so thank you both for coming. Directing the commission's attention back to the materials. As we asked, we were provided, I don't know, I guess I would, I I would just call it a status update that was requested by April nineteenth, just with regard to the festival's response to a series of what has become seven delineated concerns or items that we have collectively identified as imperative to this year's event. Your correspondence, I guess categorically goes through and offers, you know, an update as to each of those points of concern, so thank you for doing that. What I would propose, assuming everyone's had a chance to look at the letter and consider it, I guess it would make sense, I'm open to suggestions on this, just to go through the items sequentially to look at the response, and and then to just generally discuss whether, in our view, it's adequate, or there needs to be some more you know, suggestions or proactive handling applied to that, that I, sound okay?
Sounds good.
All right, so the first first item, and also we have, you know, I'm assuming the folks here tonight are affected residents, I know, I know a few of you, so thank you, thank you for coming. The first item that was identified by this commission was to obtain a signed contract from the road, Road Commission for Oakland County to provide seasonal no-parking signs and a contract to include a site plan for these sign locations. Now, the festival did submit, I believe this was attachment A. The festival has been in contact with the Road Commission with regard to two signs that are no parking violators, will be towed signs, these will be on Perryville, and then two signs, additional signs on Laring Road. Correct?
Right.
Right. I guess just the attachment, it it's really not logical, I couldn't, personally, I couldn't make out what the the specific terms or conditions of the Road Commission document were, but I guess you could speak to that or kind of explain further what what has been done in that regard.
That was the permit paperwork?
Yes.
That we submitted to the Road Commission, yes, it's kind of a little confusing, and
Yeah.
Uh, the way that the controller sent it to me doesn't make it a little much up, but basically all that permit was is we had to provide a permit, and I'm sorry, you don't have the site plan, a site plan to the Road Commission requesting that these signs be made where we wanted them, but and that piece of paperwork actually just describes Groveland Township, sections of Groveland Township that those signs would be put at to a Perryville Road, to a Laring Road. I don't think it goes in that one. Then, putting them up and taking them down.
Chip, that that's something I was, personally, I was wondering, what are these temporary signs, or these just like?
Yeah, they're temporary signs that'll go up about a week before, if I understood Alex correctly. The signs who go up, the Road Commission will put those signs up yearly for us and take them down
And an obvious question I had, why, if you know, you may not know this, why the prohibition on signage on Holdridge Road?
Because the state police do not have any restrictions on that.
You can't put no parking signs on a road until the Michigan State Police do a traffic evaluation and determine that it's actually a problem, and then trying to get the road across, tendle across from the Frisbee Gulf thing posted for a year and a half, and Alex has been jumping through hoops, and there's only two guys up in Lansing that do it, and they're not going to do it until Alex can call and say, you come down here on Saturday, I'll show you all the people that are parked there, and then they'll go, okay, now I got a problem, I can order it. It's just, it can't do it without.
Because state police don't have a regulation on the road, the Road Commission can't oversee that, they can't oversee that the movements are.
It's just like speed limits, everybody thinks you could just go out there and nail it, no, you can't.
Not by the state.
They they call all shots.
So when do you expect, um, do you expect some kind of communication back from the commission in terms of approving the application?
We just, well, actually, we just got a email from Lois at the Road Commission. She needed a better site plan, so under her suggestion, I sent her a Google map, and I can send it to Danielle.
Okay.
I sent her a Google map showing where the signs will be placed on Laring Road and Perryville Road, and I did that last Thursday, and so they haven't called or emailed me back to say they need more information, so they've cashed the check already, so. I can do a follow-up.
Yeah, just double-check and make sure that it was good, especially if they cashed a check.
Chip, there were no signs on Laring or Perryville last year, is is that true?
That is true.
Okay, so this is an added measure. Okay, well, hopefully, that'll be beneficial, enforcement is a whole different issue, but if the signs are there, right, I know we've discussed that, but if the signs are there, that gives enforcement powers. Correct, yes, and it and it does advise against the possibility of having your vehicle towed, which is important. Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns regarding the first item or the festival's response to item number one? Okay, we'll move along to item two then, which is the formable plan to fix the root cause of the traffic in the parking breakdown. Now, for this, I guess, response, I'll just, you know, provide my own summation, road engineering was retained, obviously, we had representatives from Row that were here at the special meeting on April twenty-second, we had a chance to meet them, and, you know, openly discuss our concerns for their benefit, for the commissioner, for the festival's benefit, and you know, we also have a correspondence that they've authored to the commission, kind of proposing what they're what they're hoping to have done and when, importantly. But with regard to item two, I suppose that the substance of the letter speaks for itself, it largely looks to road engineering to to speak on behalf of the festival with regard to the formable plan and identifying the root cause, is that is that fair, Kathy?
Yeah, in this instance, it may translate into, talk about it to you.
Correct. Any any thoughts or concerns or feedback with regard to?
Hold them until we review the row. When, I'd say, go through the rest of the points, and then we can move back to the.
Right, yeah, they all kind of tie together in in some form or fashion, I agree with you, Angela. All right, so number three then, we'll we'll go along to item number three, which is the quote for the electric signs, and specifically the signs to be situated on I seventy-five North and South that exits one oh one and one oh six, and North and South Dixie. The signs to be utilized all festival weekends, and the quote is to be for the purchase of signs or a contract with a guaranteed delivery and festival staff to be given full and festival staff to be given full operation of the messaging. So in response, the festival provided, I believe this is the attachment B. This is attachment B. State barricades. So this was the, this was the quote for the purchase or the lease?
It's going to be for a lease. And then after speaking with Mr. Maggiano, that was his recommendation, the lease, because if one of them breaks, they can, we can get it replaced and then year after year with the updates to the software and everything else that we talked about. The last number for that would be slightly rusted up.
That's Rose's letter?
This is Rose's letter. They have exit 10106 and it should be right, but they have in their letter the wrong number. I'm sure, but I know, but I don't want them to have a loophole. Oh, well, we said 100 and there isn't one, so.
So, so Chip, this is a quote. And Kathy? I guess, is it, are there any, where? Where does the quote in the invoice speak to the messaging aspect of this?
I think it is. I thought it was in the quote that would give us availability.
Yeah, it's right here. You will have
Okay, so that's appreciate that. So, so do you know, or could you explain for my benefit, maybe others here, how these, these messaging boards will work? If you're given control of them by the lease arrangement?
Yeah. So the nice part about it is normally during the week, as I think Bob's pointed out in the past, we would put, you know, opening weekend Renaissance Festival. Second weekend, this is our thing. And then it would allow us on those busy weekends to be able to go on our phone or onto a laptop. We start having a traffic backup or we have an emergency or something that would allow us to, we would have immediate access to start attempting, I say attempt, because I can't control people driving down the street. That would be our way of attempting to divert people from coming to the festival. Watch for backups, traffic, Renaissance Festival's full today. Things along that line that we would be able to control at that point.
In real time.
In real time.
Right. Okay. And, and that would be fully within your control, not some it would. Okay. Okay. And again, that's something new this year that we didn't have access to last year.
Yeah, we didn't even, during COVID last year, we didn't have access to digital signs last year.
In years past, so had there not been, there's been digital signage on Dixie Highway, correct? But never on?
The problem was the control. Leasing agent for it. So they would, I think you said, have to call them up.
Sometimes it would take a couple hours before they
Like having a heart attack.
Yeah.
So just specifically, where would these be put? These would be, there would be two on I-75 and then two on Dixie Highway?
Yeah, the ones on Dixie Highway are at, just by the fire station, right there. And the other one, I don't know how to reference it for you guys. Frank Parker's property.
Just off of Shenanigans trees.
Yeah, yeah. That's where it's been for years. So as people are coming up the expressway, they see it right away.
Okay. So I'll actually see two signs. If they're coming, depending on which way they're coming, they'll actually have two signs that they'll see.
Okay. So can we do this? It's like, I think it's good. And the big thing is, is you got control of the signs, which is really good. Can you just flesh out in bullet number three, how you are going to utilize the signs? So exactly what you said, Chip. So, you know, you'll have the ability to, when the parking is full, you will have the ability to go through and, and place that messaging on the boards. You know, that's item 101, or if there's an emergency situation, here's how. Yeah, if we could just bolt that out here, I think that would be, that would be good. Cause then that starts really getting into the details of, of the plan, at least for
There's other things that we're working on that you have not been given yet.
Yeah.
And one of them, which I think is going to be really valuable, is a phone app. That, I mean, you got 200,000 people on our Facebook page and all of them would gladly have a phone app if nothing, you're going to get special deals and on tickets and stuff like that, but it would give us direct personal access to sending out mass emails through their phones. I don't have all of it together yet, but I'm working with one of the girls in Minnesota. We tried to do it a couple of years, well, about three or four years now. And at the time, the technology just wasn't there. We just couldn't get it so that we could deal with it. But now it looks pretty simple. So we've been able to in tandem, I mean, we can set up on the computer. So if these signs change, that goes out immediately.
Yeah, I remember right, the industry conferences I attend will have, and it, there's a couple of different companies that do these phone apps. But what happens is if they need to send an alert out, it sends it via text, which is nice. Because when you're alerted, you can see what's happening real time. So.
Yeah. And as soon as they have, yeah. More concrete information. So I know exactly what I'm saying. We'll get a little more, but it's definitely something we've looked at before and it looks like it's something we can do now. So I think it will make a big difference.
When you change the signs, do you do it with one command and all four signs will change? You don't have to do it four times?
No.
Good.
And the good part about the app would be that the people that will get it won't be coming on Dixie Highway and seeing it. Right. They'll be in their houses someplace.
Or on the road or something.
But it gives people's attention a lot sooner, in a lot more timely fashion.
Thank you.
Well, that's, yeah, that's very encouraging. That would certainly be a welcome additional measure that would communicate, you know.
Communicate a lot of things. You can then you take, pick it up and transfer it over to one of the other things down there. And so if there's an emergency on the site, if there's a weather issue, I mean, this last year, we had a tornado touchdown here.
Yes.
Right. And we had a whole bunch of people on our property and we, we managed to get everybody stationary instead of them getting out of there and had them shelter in place on our site. Doug Smith from Holly Township was there and he, at the end of it, said that it went really well. But that was with our voices, our radios on and of blowhard, you know, that was it. But so we could get all those people that can be contacted for anything that's an emergency. It gives us lots of access and then we want to talk about marketing issues. Cause there's lots of marketing things.
All right. So I guess with regard to item three, any other, and that's pertaining to the electronic signage, any other thoughts, questions, concerns, Janelle?
Just, Commissioner Willis had asked Chip to outline something. I don't know, would that answer? Okay.
Yeah.
Just a little bit more detail on how those signs will be utilized.
Okay, thank you. Then moving along to the fourth item in the, in the letter, this regards the professional third party study for which Row Engineering was retained, of course, for parking traffic capacity and disaster recovery action plan. I guess at this time, that would bring into relevance the Row correspondent stated April 19th. This was exhibit C to Kathy's letter. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review that. As, as I read it, you know, this is just kind of an extension of our discussion on April 22nd with Row. With the extension being they're, they're kind of proposing a timeframe towards accomplishment of their ultimate objectives here. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Pretty much, yeah.
Right? And in the letter, what they've proposed and at any point, if anyone has thoughts or comments or criticisms regarding this, please chime in. But the first week of May, which is, I guess, next week, they're proposing to accomplish a, a certain number of things, mainly pertaining to meeting with festival personnel, reviewing historical data, developing, you know, parking lot traffic control plans, so on, so forth. Prepare the parking lot layout for, for for parking volumes by the first week of May. The second week of May per the letter would be to kind of advance the collection of information based upon meetings and, you know, review of data to a development of theories regarding identifying the root cause of the problem. And for formulating plans to, to lessen the likelihood that those issues would be experienced in connection with this season's event. And then also to meet with the key folks connected with the festival to ensure the implementation of what they're proposing could be attainable. So I guess that brings us then to June 1st, which would be where the feedback would come back to the commission in the form of a letter report. Which would be a summation of really Rose's evaluation of the issues, their proposal and their recommendation for action plans moving forward. Does anyone have any, I guess, thoughts with regard to the content of the Row correspondence, specifically any concerns with, with regard to that?
The one thing that I would just add, under the second week of May, 2022, around the first bullet, you know, based on limited information, and we've talked about this, based on limited information provided by MRF, developed theories regarding root causes of the traffic backups. And formulate plans to lessen the chances of them occurring again. What I'd like to see is it taken a step further and say, determine what can be done in 2022 as contingency. And then after that, what, and then also to determine what can be done long term to to address root cause. So that's what I would, I would suggest in terms of that bullet number one, taking it all away. Cause right now it's just more formulating plans. Okay. Well, what are we going to do? You know, there may be certain things that could be done now. Perhaps as contingency or as a stopgap, but then there, what's the long term? You know, what are we looking at long term?
And, and I appreciate that, Angela. Is that, are you looking to advance what they, what Rose identified in connection with the June 1st completion date? Cause they do make reference to the written contingency plan being provided to the commission at that time.
I want to see a link. So based on what they're coming up with on May, on that second week in May, I want to be able to see from them, okay, based on what they determine in terms of root cause and what can be done about it. Are there areas that can be attacked that could be folded into their contingency plan or, or at least something that can be addressed in 2022? Maybe it's not contingency, maybe it's long term, or maybe it's, it's a part of the solution, but it's only a partial solution that could be implemented this year as an example. So it's just taking, taking that step a little further and making that handshake to the contingency plan and ultimately your, your final plan. That's all.
Does, does that make sense to, to the Renaissance people?
Basically, there needs to be a lot more detail.
Yeah, just making that, yeah, just making that.
So because what they sent you is there, what they normally send anybody that's, that's in your situation. And so the reality is, is that Row Engineering works for us. So they're only going to share so much. And unless I tell them, share more, they're not, probably are not going to. I mean, that's been my take on the way that it goes with them. So I think that needing more than they gave you this time. And maybe, maybe those weekly updates should be shared with you and I can share what we're doing. I mean, you just need more information.
Yeah, I just want to sure.
Looking for a comfortable level that is happening.
Yeah, I just want to sure and say, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're formulating plans and, but we're taking due diligence. What can we do now versus long term? That's all.
The thing, there are, I mean, there's going to be the same, the same situation we're going to run into. I mean, every, when, when this, these things happen and it's like you guys, you know, I mean, everybody's conscious, it's like, you know, every four or five, six years, whatever. So we'll have a weekend and it's always the same weekends because those are the big weekends. That's why this, this is surprising.
Yeah.
Yeah, any other weekend but this one would have been a better one. But there's, it's never caused by the exact same thing. I mean, I've been, I've been doing this for 20 years now and, and the four times that there were big upsets like this, it was all for the reasons were very obvious, but they were also very different. And so they were addressed differently. And, and like the first, the first time was, it was just simply a growth spurt, kind of like what we had this weekend or this year. But it was a continued growth spurt. So we had to answer it by, by adding to the parking. And over the next four years, that continued to happen. And that was, it covered two times that we had backup on Dixie Highway, not as bad as this year. This was the worst year. This year was an anomaly, I think, around the country, not just us. But the, the other, the third time, it was when they, the Road Commission shut down the, the expressway. And everybody was detoured off the expressway between the exact two places, the two exits that we use. But Bob had a good talk with them and they're never going to do that again. So, but that was what happened. I mean, they dumped all of the traffic off the expressway and 90% of those people were not coming to us. They were mad and they were going in all directions, but it was crazy. And then this year, you know, what happened was just, everybody thought it was the year of COVID relief. And around the country, festivals and events saw record crowds. There's other shows that I know that shut down before they ever opened. Because they, their parking lots were full before, two hours before they normally would open. That was in Colorado. I mean, but it's, it is still happening to an extent, but it's not, it's crazy now as it was. So, I mean, I, there are some changes that need to be made. Some things have changed. And what's available to us though, and that needs, you know, we need to look at that. I mean, so Mont Holly was something that, according to this board, was mandatory for us to use every year. And, and I had an ongoing agreement with them that we could use it every year, no problem. Now it's not available to us. And the next, the next one was Wally. At, at Rod Manor. And now it sounds like maybe there's a deal worth there too. So I mean, we've been told that on the other side, but what you guys said about parking it across the road and the concern about people walking.
Yeah.
It's a big concern. I get that, but but it's, there's limited space out there. And in our parking lot, space wise, numbers of space, we, we, the parking, this year when we had it all backed up, the parking lot was not full.
No.
We couldn't get them on and off.
Yeah.
And so that's why we again brought up the whole idea of that, that we brought up before, that we need a better way in and out. And I think we've got that. And I think if we can make it happen, at least the self parking lot this year, it would be, it would probably solve the problem. The self parking lot is the problem.
Bob?
I don't disagree with anything she said, cause she's true. We have fixed this several times and it's usually some divergent reason. It wasn't exactly the same as the previous one. This is what I think the root cause is though. Whenever something happens explosive growth, diverted traffic, loss of parking or whatever it is, the contingency is never there to the contingency is never there to handle it. So let's just hypothetically say that you get through these seven items. You come up with a list of what has to be done. I'm pretty confident from the meetings with the police and sheriff, that somewhere in that solution has to be one or two more entries into the park or exit points that are separate, so the traffic doesn't congest with itself going in the opposite direction. But the fact remains that regardless of whether you do that or not, get it done, the sheriff because a lot of time has lapsed now since October, and that hasn't been done. The solution has to be, one, everything doesn't work. I don't care if it's unexpected growth. I don't care if it's diverted traffic from someplace else. What do we do to stop the mass congestion that happens on Dixie Highway? And I think to Angela's point, that's where the process has to say, we don't really know or can't positively identify what caused it now, but this is how we fix it right away. I, I can't emphasize enough, I do not want my ambulance running down Dixie Highway, head into traffic the wrong way, trying to get to somebody's emergency, because we've got four people making U-turns because they're tired of waiting in line, three people relieving themselves on the side of the trees, and all kinds of terrible things that happen because there's no plan for when something, whatever is, goes wrong. You, if you can't get it all fixed this year, you need to at least say, here's what we can fix, and here is how we fix it when it doesn't go right, and it's not, we gotta wait another year and see what it is. That's what, that's what bothers me. We don't, we need a solution that says, whatever it is that makes the problem, here's how we clear it up. And, and I'm just telling you, from twenty-seven years of this, I think we got a fundamental set of issues here. One is not enough entry and exit points. And she's right, in the past, all the requests to Holly have been denied, okay? Now, I don't care if you put them on Dixie on Groveland side, I just want the problem fixed, okay? But if you can't get it all fixed, there's still going to be the potential for a huge number of people showing up and no place to put them. And maybe the parking lot will be partly empty or not, I don't know. But the issue is, if you can't move them in and out this year, you still have to have a fix that says, when X happens, this critical mass, right now, we shut the festival, or whatever we do. I don't mean to. I, we've done it a couple of times.
We did it the first time this year, and that's exactly what happened.
Let's say at least a month, I think, a couple of years ago.
Nope.
That's what has to happen, okay? The cost of not fixing it becomes more than the cost of fixing it, it will get fixed.
And I think the contingency plan needs to be, I mean.
In place this year.
Definitely, especially with this. Even though he says that he's only gonna have five thousand people, I mean, I think based on where you're, I think what the, what the, the reason why you guys have issues come up, and they're, and they're from different causes, different reasons, and things happen, is you're right at that edge. You're, you're riding that edge, and it just takes one, one hiccup, and you go tilt.
This could be your hiccup.
And I wasn't gonna say anything while he was here, but because I don't know if it's appropriate that you so, but this surprises me.
Yeah.
You know what, two years ago, there was a meeting in my office with, and I don't know the guy's name, but he wanted to do, he did a, they did a, a car show in Holly. And they were being displaced and wanted to put it out, out here. And they were predicting, you know, a hundred and fifty cars. No, it was, you were there though. This guy, the guy was, it was a charity one. And we talked to you about it, because, because he was asking me to, to let him do it. You know, it was for charity, blah, blah. And he was told, either your decision was he couldn't do it. And the reason was that because with the RV part going in and us, you were concerned about it being too big. They were only expecting like three hundred people. So, so, so he couldn't do it during our busy time. But now he's on our busiest weekend. And how, why, why would that not have been a consideration by the?
And before this was a product, and I think because his, two of his, first two or three of his first four fest, COVID was on, and people was getting much done. That's why, I think. And they were arranged through Open County Parks, not really through the township. The fact that he comes in now took place last year when we had those complaints. And the guy with the open headers, the park made a commitment that said, if it's an event that's not coordinated directly through Open County Parks, they have to come to you and go before the planning commission for a special use permit, so you control whether or not they get to use it or not. And so this is the first time he's actually come, or last year was.
He's been here before.
Yeah, last year, I think, was the first one he came into us. But he's had four of them there, and they have their problem. What's happened is, when the traffic gets really bad on the festival, and he has that event, he actually is able to get his people in. The problem is they get stuck in that traffic jam, and half of them started turning in to the Renaissance Festival because they thought it was parking for his off-road stuff. And some of the people turning into the off-road park were actually trying to get to the festival, and that's what compounded it last year.
Well, and, and Mont Holly has always been where we park.
Yeah, you've had Mont Holly in the past, and you might have to give this year, I don't know.
So, well, I can, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And, and Rod, man, it's, it's nice of all the offer to help, but I admit that, that is a disaster waiting to happen. Every time we've tried parking people on the opposite side of the road, they get frustrated when the traffic's back because there's no light or clearly defined crosswalks. And they finally just start pushing.
But again, going back to the Row study, it sounds like you've got property to park cars. And, and Row just needs to look at that and come up with a plan, in and outs, maybe a long-term challenge, but you've got the real estate. And we've just got to get that laid out for this year, and then look towards long-term for the in and out.
And then, and then just trying to come up with, you know, okay, how can we, how can you ensure that you can maximize the flow, you know, going in and out and preventing bottlenecks?
Yep, and that's where their expertise should help us understand that.
And then, and then what's a part of your contingency plan if something goes sideways?
The contingency works, you'll have a vehicle to take care of a problem if it's not all fixed this year.
Right. That's why we want.
That's the critical part of this whole thing.
Right.
And I think the good, the good thing is seeking out that phone app. I think that's going to be, that's gonna play a big role in the contingency plan, and that's gonna be huge.
If, if Ms. Flacken saying.
Trying to figure out how they did it in and out easier. I have yet to hear what you're gonna do for the residents. I can't tell you how many days I could not turn onto my road, whether it was going down Groveland, going down Perry, which I live on, or even being able to turn left to get on a trip to come in the back way.
Well, I.
And then when you've got cars parked on both sides, I drive a big truck. I can't get down it. An ambulance is not gonna get down it. A fire engine's not gonna get down it. And then you've got Google Maps or whoever saying, hey, there's a backup. They're sending you down trip in Groveland and Van Road, and Van Road is tight.
Well.
Getting through that or around anyway, they're setting there.
And, and I will assure you, I, I, I think I speak for all of us when I say, since last year's event, that's been, you know, kind of the, the emerging singular objective to ensure to do what we can in a proactive vein to, to come up with some solutions, identify and correct.
But if you're not gonna put a parking sign at Van and Perryville, they're gonna. They're gonna come back in that way, and they're gonna park there.
You can't do it to state police.
So.
But there are, there are things that the state police do allow, that we've identified specific things like we're discussing tonight, that the festival's working on. But we're trying to do things ahead of schedule as much as possible at this point to ensure, you know, full compliance.
To answer her question, the solution to this is not going to be post-two signs here, and then next year, post-two more ones. Then the year after that, post-two more, because they're just not going to do it. It's never going to happen. Here, so the solution is, fix the root cause and have a fundamental system that quickly dissipates the backlog when it happens. You have that, and all the rest of that other stuff will go away. And I see what the police or the sheriff said. Once you move it out of there, if you get that done, all this other stuff just disappears.
Well, I think that is exactly what we're hoping to see from Row. I guess, just to bring the focus back to the Row correspondence, is there any concern with regard to the timeframes that are spelled out?
When is the special use permit due?
Well, I guess you can decide that typically it's supposed to be, and this is one of the things we probably need to straighten out. It's gotta be before she opens.
Well, I think.
So you have to have a list of what it is you want done by then, and you've got to get some concurrence that, and if it's seven or whatever it is, these are the things that will be done this year before you open, or, or the permit doesn't get issued.
And, and Bob, what we had identified as acceptable would be a sixty days in advance of scheduled opening. August twentieth is, it's my understanding, that's the first opening of, of the event. So you'd be looking at, you know, mid, mid to late June for completion of everything we've asked to be addressed. And I guess, you know, that's where I would tender it back to the commission. Is there any concerns at this point with regard to that timeframe?
Well, it gets tight if we're, if we're getting our, our first read back from Row June first. And we want to bounce that off of, of our independent engineering firm.
Correct.
And we've got a, and we've got to have time to, to implement things. Obviously, they're implementing them as we're going through. That doesn't leave a lot of time.
Is there any possibility to advance the letter report from Row? I guess that would be a question better posed to them.
Some, some things, yeah. Again, as I'm talking to them, there, I mean, so this next, this next week, as opposed to, I mean, it, it's not part of that, what you're going to need. But one of the other things that they were not putting into the plan, but now after I told them what we have to, we're gonna go ahead and, and go ahead and start the ball, wanting to put the new, the, the exits in. Because if we don't do it now, it will run too late. It doesn't necessarily mean to me that, first of all, I don't think that both of them are necessary as the one in the self parking lot. I think that's the most important one, because that's where the backup is created. And secondly, is that a problem for the first couple of weeks? So as long as we have construction started on your timeframe, if it's not a hundred percent complete opening weekend, I would think that that should be acceptable. I don't, I mean, that, that's my opinion. But as long as, once, once the company starts working, it's not like you're gonna walk away from the job. So they'll get it done. I think that's important, but we're gonna put the permits in for those this week, this next week. Because it has to go through the process. You know, we, and we have to put the permit in, and they, they have to approve it. They have to send somebody else to take a look at, at what the, what the property is, where the exit's gonna be.
And, and Kathy, can you speak to that, or can you elaborate on where you're referencing an additional exit from the South Lawn?
Yeah, where, where we would suggest strongly, and probably we believe is the best place, far better than over Joe, is our own property, and you run it straight up the side. I don't know if you guys are familiar, some of you are, but the mobile, the mobile home part, and then there's a burn. You just go run that road right up to, by that burn, right tight up against it, and have it come right out on Dixie. What that does is this gives us the exit, and it would be an exit. We wouldn't enter people there, only exit. So, but that's the problem is when we have so many people trying to come in, and so many people trying to leave, and we have one narrow road from to get out of, it's chaos. So the people with the exit on that side, they go, they have to go south. The, the rest of the people will be entering the other entrance, the normal, the only pre-existing one, and that would be for enter-only. And that way, we could, we could keep, it would create a circle. It would just be a constant move. And the traffic would never meet each other. There'd be a space between them. So that's, that's the area we want to put it in. That's what Ayn Row and I have been talking about. And that was actually a conversation I had with the, a company that did traffic, was gonna do a traffic study for us. But that's what they suggested too.
So could we do, could we have Row for the bullets of June first? And I mean, to me, is there any way possible, or that those bullets under June first be moved up to the third week of May, and basically prior to June?
Every week's gonna help.
Because there's a gap. I mean, it's a pretty significant back gap, and I would think that you should be, or Row should be able to be able to provide all five of those bullets that are under June first in the third week of May, after you conclude, after they conclude the work in the second week of May.
Do you know what, what's the date that we meet in May, scheduled?
Meet on the twenty-third of May. So if, if Row could get that by like the sixteenth, it'd be about two weeks and two days earlier than their current June first plan, then it could be in a packet. Okay, I think, I think it's fair to ask, and I think it's fair for me to talk to them tomorrow. And I can call somebody who you were, and you were somebody, and let you know how it goes, what, if they've got reasoning behind not being able to accomplish all of it, or, or is it gonna be just that you're working for us, and if they want to do it, then that's what they'll do. They're pretty accommodating. I think that, I think Dean's, Dean is just used to his way of working. That's all. He doesn't work with a sense of the same kind of urgency that you have to have sometimes when you're sitting where you are, where, where we are. And so taking a little bit of time is okay for him. And I bet I can get him, I'm pretty sure I can get him moving forward.
And I, I would optimistically agree. You know, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but looking at what's proposed during the first and second weeks of May, I think there is a little bit of room for acceleration there. So hopefully, he will, he would agree with that. And obviously, that's important for our purposes, because that'll keep us on a sixty day in advance of opening the event, to, to have all of this completed, you know, satisfactorily and on time.
And we'll talk to them tomorrow.
Jim?
Yeah, a few things. I'm gonna have to bop back a couple of ones, too. So in our previous meeting, the young lady, I think her name is Haley, I, I'm pretty sure she agreed that this would be a collaborative effort. So I would hope that all information can be shared. Because collectively, your team and our team, we should be able to sort this out. So I would just want to stress, I'm expecting collaboration. In the letter, there's something that I think it's important. Two times in the letter, there's citations that say, based upon information provided by the festival, based upon limited information provided by the festival. On their website, Row makes it quite clear, they're capable of forecasting. They tout modeling software. So while I don't doubt that Chip can provide information, I'm expecting to see modeling on behalf of the community, or the minimums, or the maximums. You should be able to do that. At least they say they can do it. And that in part is gonna be where our decisions come from, is that. So if, if, if it's appropriate, I think that needs to be expressed to them. Then again, I heard pretty loud and clear at the beginning of our conversation, waffling from the two of them, well, we can't guarantee this is gonna work. Okay, that's, I can respect that maybe from a science brain, but I sure as hell know that they can model it. And we all have to base our information on that. So that's one thing I wanted to bring up. The other component of what we just talked about, and this is, I think, for us to decide if it's helpful for the folks from Row to come in and address us directly, that might buy them some time to complete whatever they have to complete by May twenty-sixth or whatever you say. complete whatever they have to complete by May twenty-sixth or whatever you say.
Makes it seem like you're willing to be included in the package.
Okay, but it might buy them some time rather than submit us a report, might help out everybody if we just talk about have a report to read.
I don't understand what you mean by that some time.
Might gain them a few days to provide more calculations, to do whatever they have to do. In other words, you're pressing them, which is admirable, to have something in here by sixteen. If they say we just can't do it, we can still perhaps get our wish collectively. Buy them a couple of days and just have them report directly to us, or submit the report a little bit late, rather than reading it on paper and us correcting it.
You mean, just have an exchange with them in terms of as they're progressing down the path of their final report?
In part, yeah.
Kind of doing a check-in with us to, to just, okay, here's what we've got so far. You know, is this in the right direction? Or is this what you had in mind, or do you need a little bit more, things, things along those lines? Just, so if, what, what what's trying to be said is if, if they come in and plop a, send an email, find a report on the sixteenth, and we have a meeting, and then we say, oh, no, this isn't gonna work. Well, then now you're stuck, right?
I completely agree with what you're saying. And as, as I when I, I do two things. One, I'm taking a time away from what you guys start talking about, because I start doing a lot of other things. And I'm conscious of that, so I'm trying to stop. But my, me saying that, I'm gonna talk to them. Part of what I would, was, was already thinking is that it just needs to be updates. Every time I get an update, you get an update. We just start making sure that you guys get something a couple of times a week, if that's
It's like an interim, interim work.
No big deal. No, I completely agree with that. And they would not have a problem doing that. And we'll just do it on a, a shared email basis. You know, what I'm getting, you'll get maybe at the same time. I don't know differences in me. It's not, it's not like, you know, the one, the one thing that Jim said that I agree with is that everything can be shared. I, I would think the, that that would be the expectation on your part. It would be the expectation on my part. It's not like I'm gonna hide anything. I, I don't do that. That's not the way. It doesn't make sense. So having really include you guys in what's going on doesn't make sense. I, I believe you got an actual, the actual billing from them, but I mean, that Jim, that Jim Peterson said. Did you guys get that?
I don't know. Billing from Row. No, ma'am.
We'd have to check the, I know that there was something, and I cannot recall what, in terms of them having Row on retainer. There was a couple of means, though, that go through the paperwork. There was something there.
You may be right.
Yeah.
I guess the point is, yes, it needs to be shared, and yes, it should be more often, more often, even by the way.
So I guess to summarize then, our, our response to what is set forth in the Row April nineteenth communication, and anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to advance the schedule to shoot for consideration by the commission at our next meeting scheduled for May twenty-third, correct? And, and the May sixteenth deadline is tied to publication of the packet for our benefit in advance of that meeting. Understand that? Okay. Anything else on that? And with, I guess, just with regard to bullet point four and the festival's response to that, you know, inclusive of the Row correspondence, any further thoughts, questions?
Yes, I love the statement. Finally, it is also important to note that we have no issues with capacity of the Renaissance. So you were saying, or Row is saying, or you're saying that there's no problem. We will say a cutoff. That, you know, if three hundred cars come in, that's it. I know there's more than three hundred. But you have no problems with that?
No problems with saying, please, opposing the gates?
Right.
No.
Okay.
I know. Other people have more problems than I did this year when that happened. Everybody's concerned about how it's gonna affect things, but it was the only thing to do, and we should have done it thirty minutes earlier. I just was trying to go through the channels that I thought I had to go through, which I now realize I don't.
Well, I love that statement. Thank you.
Is there a way, you know, getting back to some of the residents concerns? I was just thinking about this. Google Maps. Can, does Michigan State Police or County Sheriff, do they have a conduit to be able to
Change that?
Change the routing or, or make it preventable so folks cannot do? Yeah, I was just wondering about that.
Find us out the reason, but I believe the way that Google Maps works is they're actually paying people's cell phones on that. So when you guide down the road, it says, hey, two miles ahead, I seventy-five is blocked up. That's because they got a bunch of things that are moving. And so I'm guessing that's a fully automated system that does that. I don't, I understand what you're asking. It's a great idea, but I don't think there's a way.
I can ask. But someone, someone like M. Dot communicates to them in terms of construction and everything else to go through and put those road closures in, anticipated road closures and things of that nature. So somebody's communicating with Google Maps.
They do that if they know there's a road that's going to be closed. But what happens here is this happens because all of a sudden, a bunch of cell phones, I think, I think this is all, a bunch of cell phones got pinged and they didn't move. There must be a traffic jam.
I, I get that.
Dixie Highway, we're not gonna-
No, no, I get that. But there should be a mechanism in place, whether it's going through the state police or M. Dot, to say, do not prescribe this road, this road, this road as alternate routes. There should be a way of doing that. And maybe we can get that in place to prevent folks from going down some of the back roads, and that could alleviate that concern. I, I'm pretty sure there's gotta be a way of doing it.
I'll check it. It'd be interesting to find out.
Yeah.
Okay. Unless there's further thoughts or comments with regard to response item four, I would propose we move to item five. And I think item five actually has been discussed already, but that would be the contingency plan and the logistical preparedness in the event of, you know, an all, an all-out failure of the the advance measures, we'll call them. It's my understanding that's gonna be part of the Row report, which we've thoroughly discussed. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Item six, the response with regard to the concern for site plan, chalking of parking spaces and the staffing of appropriate personnel. The festival response is that they have purchased chalking equipment for lining the lot, and Row Engineering, of course, will, you know, be conducting a study with regard to capacity of parking spaces on the property and for identification of lanes for emergency vehicles. And that, again, just goes to traffic flow in and out of the, the event. Any response, questions from the commission with regard to the festivals?
Just maybe being aware that in the event that it's the wet season, you might have lands that you can't park on that. That's all for contingency.
And, and I guess my, my question with that pertain to the, when is, when does the chalking take place? Is this a one-time thing? Or is this like, in every weekend, it's re, it's redone?
It does, it does sometimes more.
Yeah, Jason and I, Jason Parker and I had discussed this in Florida a couple of weeks ago. The, the plan is to go out about a week before we open, give it its first chalking, and just watch it and see what happens. I know using chalk actually kills the grass at some point in time, and you can see the lines. So it'll just be a going out hitting the maintenance. Yeah, it is branded a little bit. So the, the plan is to just monitor it, and when we see that we need to touch up a, a line here and there, or if we have to redo the whole thing, get out there and get it done. Especially knowing when we're going to get into those fifth, sixth and closing weekend. It's gonna be even more imperative. That, the nice part is we've already gone out there and chalked those lines and a couple of times prior to those weekends. So it'll, it'll actually get faster for us.
You got your routine down.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in that, so Row will be looking at the property and actually preparing, what, a schematic for, for individual?
I think they already have.
Yeah, we do already have a lot.
They do.
Yeah, the, the party, the parking lots are all written right into the same year. And it, it covers all the property. So that is done. I mean, they might look at it again. I mean, I, I think that putting in that row in the self-parking line is going to take away on a minor number of spaces. So, so there'll probably be an alteration. But, but that, that study was done a long time ago. And every time we add a new property, then we do it.
So it's taking advantage of all the available space, so you can get the cars in quickly.
Okay. Any further comments on that? Yes, sir.
I have a question. She said you were gonna talk to Holly. And this one, I was just wondering if you were helpful.
Talked them all off consistently, multiple times. Well, so far, they've said, yeah, we'll do whatever. The last time Danielle's in our office, whenever she sends something out to our planning commission, she automatically sends it to the, the supervisor and the chair of the planning commission and Holly. Pam's been in our office, she's always multiple times, discussed it with Jim a couple of times, with me a couple of times. And so far, they have all said, the last conversation, I was made aware, that we're gonna do whatever you guys ask. So I can tell you, so far, everybody's agreed.
I just wanted to throw a hope for them. I just have another comment.
Certainly.
And maybe you can, but can they use the information signs on I seventy-five? About Renaissance capacity and farther down towards Detroit? I mean, it's, they're, they're there. I've seen other, other information that come up there that's not it's not really, it's like an accident or something like that. It's just kind of just like a common question, or where you're sitting.
Yeah.
Would, can they access that and say, you know?
I, I would be flabbergasted if M. Dot would let you go. Anything that they do.
I don't know. I mean, can, can we at least?
You can ask them.
Yeah, they do.
I'll bet you that they say, well, part of the no, don't you understand the other, the other probably?
At least, at least during the busiest weekends.
Chip, you want a pen and, pen and paper? You getting all that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
He was, in the end, I know you're still trying to get everything together. Even if you put more parking signs on the road, you, you're creating a name. There will be somebody that will come to actually enforce it. And you actually advise or control on a regular basis. Here we are on a real busy weekend.
We'll, we'll, we'll have to talk to the MSP
Okay.
about when we get closer to it, because if I tell them now, they'll probably forget by then.
Okay.
And, and it is always subject to whatever else they gotta do. Their main charge is to take I seventy-five to Great Lakes, to the pound line, do the police work in the three-pound ships. But I'll, I'll talk to them.
I talked to two officers at the, I'm agreeing on, I called for insurance.
When Phil's the boss, I'll, when we get closer to it, we have it all ironed out, so.
Can we also ask them, they have a problem, that they only had one twenty company that they could use?
Yeah, I'm surprised they usually have three. I don't know if they changed it or something, or what happened. I don't know.
I know they said that these towings companies are short-staffed, especially on the weekends.
Yeah, I don't know. Normally, they like it, because when they pick your car up there, it's usually a couple of hundred bucks. They're happy to put a parking lot they got, Toby aren't full of them, so you got the money.
Well, at the very least, could they actually get somebody out there to get those, put those annoying stickers right on the side window, you know, the ones that take forever and a day to peel off?
Those are usually done by the residents in areas where they have a habitual parking problem.
Well, maybe we get some volunteers, and then they can select the total vehicle right on the way, and they're all set. Then all they gotta do when they get a chance, they come sell the vehicle. And in the meantime, they get this obnoxious sticker that doesn't come off.
I guess just, if you could elaborate a little bit on the appropriate personnel or staffing of appropriate personnel, is that just with regard to the, the, the chalking of the, the parking spaces? Okay, that's not staffing at the event or anything, parking lot attendance?
It is both.
It is both?
Yes.
Okay.
It takes, it takes, it takes a crew of about, I average, like, about twenty to twenty-five people to cart those lots.
Okay.
And that's Jason and Chip, other people. Jason and Chip are the ones that make sure that everybody at, is trained and when they, you know, supervise really good, and make sure things go right.
So where does that pool of people come from? Is it?
It depends on the year.
High school kids or?
We have high school kids, we get college students. We, I tend to try and get more colleges than
We have professional companies
Yeah.
Couple of years.
Right.
Because I, I just worry, you know, people come in, they've been sitting, they're tired, and here's some sixteen-year-old kid waving at them, and they say, well, the heck with you, I'm parking over here. Versus an adult that it's like, you know.
Oh, no, they do it to adults. They did it to me, I can tell you that. We just look at them and say, which part of follow the leaders you not understand?
Right.
They, they just want to go up. You get those. So last year, what we did was we implemented utilizing the sheriff's office in the parking.
Right, a little more presence.
That will be more of a presence. It's a kind of, for lack of a better term, we sheep herders
Right.
using their trucks and cars to, when people would start getting out of line, go after them and put them back in line. And we'll do that again this year.
Okay.
No, it's actually an assigned position.
Is there gonna be someone that washes the traffic on Dixie as they're coming in and out?
Yeah, I believe that might.
I was, I was just going there. Perfect segue, thank you very much, because the next item, actually, the last point of concern in the, in the letter was language. Add language to the police contract to include use of the patrol car speakers to make emergency announcements and assurance that they will be there, which goes to what you were about to say.
So the, the plan is, and I believe there's a copy of an email between myself and Sergeant Miller, Patrol Services Unit. Sergeant Miller, Lieutenant Spencer, who has been at multiple, actually, we lot festivals, and Captain Wilson, and I did discuss the use of patrol cars, and they have agreed this year to, in the case of an emergency, tornado, severe weather, true emergency, there would be a conversation that takes place between sheriff's office and festival management, and a determination to be made to use their PA systems. We're also gonna implement, I believe it's in there, we're gonna, Festival's gonna purchase four blowhorns to be stationed. I have a staff of about fourteen, what we call costume security, public relations personnel that I have hired over the years. They know the festival grounds, like the back of their hands. In case of an emergency, we'll hand out the blowhorns for them to also go around and make announcements. We also have a very large PA system on the Joust field that the Jousters use, and we can utilize. Every stage on the festival grounds has a PA system, so that the entertainers can project out to the crowds. We will utilize those as well to get that taken care of. So that's where we're at with PA systems, car PA systems. Starts at our-
Yeah, thank you, Chip. And there's reference to the contract. It's executory, it's on the way. Any idea when that will be?
I have, I have just received a tentative contract yesterday, and the, and it was passed off to Kathy in, out to Minnesota that we received. And there, so sheriff's office is gonna be like you guys, you know, we have to schedule meetings. Like you guys, you know, we have to schedule meetings, right? So as of right now, the contract at the Sheriff's Office will not go to the Board of Directors or the Board of Commissioners. Until June. For their final approval, we'll sign it, Sheriff will sign it, and then it'll go over to the Board of Commissioners, but they're not gonna hear it until June. And that's just a format, we've never had, we've had Sheriff's Office. Contract with festivals since nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-seven. Uh, we've never had an issue with the contract, it's a three-year contract that we're looking at.
And does that, if I can interrupt, I'm sorry, does that speak to this gentleman, and what is your name? Gary Ponton, okay.
It will not, but I'll, um, I'll touch on that. So what the Sheriff's Office does, and I believe it's in the, in the package too, we have post orders. All the deputies that work festival are given a copy of the post orders, here's the, if you're assigned to the North Gate, here's your job. Everyone's given a job, also including that post orders will be. Allowing access to and from Perrigo Road, and we're gonna figure out some type of way, means of knowing that you live on Perrigo Road. So that the deputies who are out directing traffic. A green pea, what is a green pea, they see a green pea on the windshield, they know that person was on Perrigo Road, they're gonna be given. Preferential treatment to get on and to get off of Dixie Highway. And there comes the question, what's preferential treatment, if we make them sit there for a minute, is that too long? Or is that, you know, not adequate time, I'm excited, I've I've been out there, I've seen a whole lot of traffic through a little. Uh, we're just gonna have to keep, and I've talked to, again, Sergeant Miller and Lieutenant Spencer and Captain Wilson about this, and that's one of the things that's very important. Is that we make sure that the residents are taken care of, safe, safely, uh, so we're. We're, Kathy and I talked about this as well, we did that in the past, I believe we had some means of knowing who the residents were on that street. We're just gonna have to reinforce it with the deputies to make sure that they are. Listening and doing what's attempt.
Even if they just ask for our driver's license, because many times out of ten, they say, too bad, keep.
Yeah, see, with that, but then they're gonna, they're gonna stop doing what they're doing, they're gonna hold up that traffic, I would rather there be an identifier in your car.
Sure.
To know that you get preference, so that's what we're working on.
And then they can just wave you through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but it's a matter of two, for a lot of us, it's a matter of turning left. Not just, I mean, I can turn right all day long, but for me to get home, I'm turning left at no matter what road I'm at. And they, a lot of times, if it's busy, they're like, hey, I live right here. I don't care, move, no, I need to turn here, I live right here, and it's like, do you, and I had this last year, would you like a ticket? I said, no, I just wanna go home, move, or I'm giving you a ticket.
So that that has been addressed with management.
That's great, that's good news.
And if, and we'll tell you if that should happen. Please contact the Sheriff's Office and let them know if that happened.
They won't give us their names. Used to give their names.
That brings up something too, is we have cars and people with names that we can call.
Yes.
And and.
We're working on that right now.
And for anybody else, I can probably have my son come over, he needs some kind of identifiers, so he can get in and out of the intersection as well.
Yeah.
It's it's it sounds.
Picture of the officer.
Yeah.
Mr. Pat.
There you go.
Mr. Pat, it sounds as though, you know, Chip and the festival are well aware of the issues, and they're devising some solutions for the residents to your betterment. Whether it's preferential signage on your vehicles or whatever it is, that that they're working on it, and we're gonna see it. Um, sounds like maybe within the next month or certainly as part of the contract, is that?
Well, see, they they, I did talk to Kay up here, who's our, the Sheriff's Finance Manager, that's not something that we can put into the package. But it can be in the post orders, they're just gonna, they, it's already, I believe Sergeant Miller already has it documented. Into the post orders, so I can provide a copy as soon as he has it updated.
I think it's a wonderful idea to elevate the local residency to, you know, of.
There's, there's, there's no doubt, and I, speaking with the owner this past week, he's made it very clear that. Residents are priorities.
I'm kind of.
Okay.
Just a one, one quick. Comment or question on on the. Officers, is there, uh, is it in the post order or at least laid out? Where there's an understanding that a part of their responsibility, cause they're, they're the ones that are going to see firsthand when the traffic starts to get out of control.
Oh, trust me.
So, so are they, they understand that they need a holler to somebody, whether it's you or somebody else to say, hey, look, you need to.
No, they're.
Go to Plan B because we're, we're having a problem.
Oh, they're very in person doing that.
Okay.
The sergeants, where the the rotation works and the staffing works, we do have two sergeants that are also out. Patroling and they're, they actually roll up and down Dixie Highway, and they're either calling me or they're stopping in and seeing Kathy and getting her updates. Um, that's how the traffic is rolling, and do, what can we do to better facilitate it, and how's it looking? And so, yeah, that's, that is already in play every day.
So the takeaway, I guess, for item seven, cause there's a lot of suggestions, a lot of things that will or should or could be done. What is the plan with regard to the the next report as to not only item seven, but all of the the matters we're discussing tonight? I understand Row is responsible for a fair amount of them, and you're gonna communicate Kathy our desire that they accelerate their letter report. But what is the next step with regard to reporting back to us as to, like, the items you're mentioning, Chip? Any ideas from the commission on that as to?
Say, I have one.
Well, I I just, I wanna keep things on track, I wanna keep things accountable, I wanna keep things, um, you know, in the dialogue, not necessarily. Piecemeal, but just. To kind of advance what we're discussing tonight to the next month meeting.
Right.
It.
Which gives like a May 16th date, right? So things in a package.
But we should be getting some kind, I would even suggest some kind of weekly status, something for you guys, you know, in a form of a letter to Danielle that she could distribute to. I think that it's fair for you to get our response and our, our decision on some of this stuff, yeah, starting with it by next Friday.
Okay.
Well, then just make it a, when you're full, not why, I guess when we get Thursday. You know, and and include things like, for example, when you, when you guys got your draft ready for the post order that goes out. You know, so that, send that along in the status update, incident.
And what, what we're gonna give them.
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Along with you guys.
Good, all right, wonderful, um, then we'll just, we'll leave it at that for now, I guess. Final item of discussion with regard to your letter, Kathy, um, obviously, is the. The festival's obligation with regard to the fish, fishback retention. Now, that, that's a, an abundant concern that I gleaned from your letter. I'm not sure if we have the power, correct me if I'm wrong, to do much about it at this point, because that's a matter that's already been approved at the board level, correct? Right? So. Wi- without commenting on, you know, the fairness or the imposition or the approval at this point of the fee. The point is, it's out of this commission's hands, so that would be a matter to take up with the board, and I'm not trying to exonerate us from responsibility, but we made the recommendation. It met, was met with board approval, it's now, you know, it's been, it's been instituted as far as I'm aware, it's been approved.
I am not sure if anything has moved forward, if if that, I believe at this point, if nothing has moved forward, if the planning commission said. We have changed our mind on this, and maybe the two of you can confirm this with me as board of trustees, if you as a planning commission said. We have made a change in that plan, we do not feel the need, then that would be up to you, and the board could say, okay, well. Yeah, the board approved it because we know who we're beholden to, and that's the the residents here. Um, so they have to be our priority, so that's our check and balance, that's our insurance. We have not, there has not been a contract between Earl and Township and Fishback at this point, and that is true if there is not the need for this. Um, and that can be changed, but to pre-approve that money as our, our due diligence to the community, that. You know, everything is part of what you guys are asking, what the residents are requesting from us. Um, we've, we've, you know, there was no hesitance really in any of us to say, yeah, we, you know, well, that's gonna cover our backs. Meaning the residents' backs, not yet the patches, but you know.
And even though there was some, a dollar value in fees, that doesn't mean that if we utilize them, that's how much it is, as you know. And, yeah, and that, that's, I get that, I I get that it can be less, it can be more. I also know that, that a conversation that Bob and I had, and I don't know if some of this might weigh on what the decision was. He told me that he had, that he'd been told that Row Engineering no longer did traffic studies. And I told, and that was, that was, um. And so that's what his reasoning was behind, thinking there should be another party involved, but that it's not true. He said, he said that they, they sectioned them off and said that they lost all, they had five people retire. But they have people retire all the time, and they have a constant staff of at least twelve to fourteen traffic engineers. That's, that's, that, this is not, this is not their only deal with traffic, we're not the most important people they work for, so. So that, I think, could influence the whole thing too.
No, it's, uh, my, my, my take on that, regardless, I I have no question about Rose's expertise in that area, we don't consider ourselves experts. And we just wanted a third party to oversee it, to to advise us, so that we've got the best information, the best input, so we knock the ball out of the park this time. And and that's why we wanted to go after it, not any question of the quality of of Rose's work.
Okay, well, and it was.
Bob may have his opinion, but as as a board member, I I just needed a third party to advise us. To the ex, to to oversee the whole recommendation.
You guys have to do what you have to do for yourselves, and that, and that, I, I'm. That letter comes from Kathy Parker, General Manager for the Northern River Festivals. It's not necessarily everything I think of ever, I mean, I stand behind it, my name will be on it, but. My job is one thing, and my understanding of what everybody has to go through to make all of our jobs work is sometimes not quite in line. So I don't know what the outcome of that particular thing will be, but if you guys hired a third party, obviously, that's your decision. I mean, I could even, I could even say and tell you that my first thought, my most of the fact that they, having someone over, look, look at the product. Instead of actually doing for all of it, right, like hiring two different companies to do two complete traffic studies wouldn't make sense to me. But having someone, a third party to oversee, kind of like grade the work of Row Engineering. So they can say, yeah, look, this looks like a problem, or no, this looks great, but it's up to you guys, and that, that's. That's what needs to go in the letter, and so that's what we want.
Any other thoughts from the commission members on that?
No, I mean, my opinion is just a third party to look over our shoulder, double check. Again, whole spirit of collaboration, did they consider this, and can they consider this, that type of stuff, all positive, it's not meant to have a re, uh, reinvent the wheel.
Right, I understand that, but from our company standpoint, too, an additional whatever thousand dollars. Is something that's a good question, the necessity of spending, especially when, when you factor in. I mean, the cost of doing business, I get, I understand, to put, to put the road in that we're talking about putting in is close to two hundred thousand bucks. I mean, it's, it's, so there's a lot of expenditure, and we're still recovering from, just like everybody else, so they're gonna be conservative if they can be. And they're gonna question everything.
Yep.
But that's their right also.
Absolutely.
I I think it's just to, you know, to kind of expand on Neil's comment, just the subject matter expert. We need that. Um, the benefit of an industry view when it comes to really insightfully and, you know, kind of intelligently. Reviewing what will be or has been accomplished, so it'd be kind of the equivalent of the festival trying to. You know, put together a traffic study or a, a flow plan on its own. Um, you know, our ability to consider what your experts are preparing and formulating and proposing. I think we all agreed when, when that recommendation was made, we need that, the benefit of that insight. Okay. So.
I can agree with Chris that that we should just. I think Rose is trying to do something right, and do they have to reinvent the wheel? Or could they just fish back, just look at it and say, yeah, yeah, well, no, we kind of think this has got a little bit of a problem. Look at this again, I think that would be better than them to reinvent it and redo it.
The intent of the motion that was put before the trustees was for them to be oversight, independent third-party oversight.
Right, okay.
If that clarified.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and that was.
That's what we want.
That's exactly what we want, so, okay, so we'll leave things as is, correct? Okay, um. I guess with that, unless there's any other comments or questions from those in attendance, Chip. Kathy?
I think we should put an end to that.
Um, okay, so just with with regard to the agenda, the monthly report and the zodent ordinance, zoning ordinance update, those were materials that were included in the packet. I guess with regard to the commission, any concerns or questions regarding?
We haven't had any mining reports. Which is kind of late in the year.
Yep, and I cannot tell you where that stands, because, you know, I don't work in writing. So I'm not sure where they're at on that.
So I guess.
Ken, I'm so sorry, if you don't mind just a moment, I, I did want to just make note that if you have any type of public hearing that is needed for any. Changes in site plans or anything, that is, you have to publish that in the newspaper fifteen days in advance, so. That's not like.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good to see you, Kathy.
Uh, Chip, Kathy, just before you leave, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that as well, um, we do have to have public hearings for any type of, like. Plan changes in the community, we have to notify our residents through the paper fifteen days in advance of that, so. I I'm not sure if you were shooting for that, you guys, if that was the goal, or a, an actual review, initial review, but we'll do wherever we run that. But just keep that in mind, that we have to have that in the paper, because it would be considered a public hearing, so. For that, everybody, but halfway.
Okay, thank you, Janelle, um, that being said, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim.
I have something that, uh, because of this meeting, probably in my head, that I think is worthy of this.
I do apologize.
No, 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 so. So here. So. Gina was a multimillionaire, you know, wanted to build something equivalent of Shannon Industries in our township. In a more densely populated community, part of her. Proposal to the communities of traffic impact study, it's done all the time, we haven't had that luxury here because the three businesses on Dixie Highway. And it's fourth one we've really got to consider, they started to grow, and as they've grown and grown. They never did the traffic index, I guess it was an impact, now there is.
Now there is, right.
So in part, as it relates to the festival. This is all open for discussion, this is the first time I didn't intellectualize this, is that we're not gonna get that impact study, we're gonna get close to it. But that has to be on their shoulders. And it should be already. What is their plan for growth? They're continually, I really do appreciate the camp. They're getting surprised. And that's a good problem for them, but a bad, bad problem for the community. Similarly, the ORB park's gonna grow. And I'm talking right now and specifically only to the county and state component. Now, think about it. If we're fortunate enough that there's a community in the development of our community on property growth, that's a whole nother animal that's contributing to the traffic out here. So as a planning commission, you need to get ahead of that. It's just, it's never more apparent, you're sitting right between the eyes tonight. It's something we have.
Yeah, because your baseline is now going to, your, your traffic flow baseline is going to go up as more development occurs on Dixie Highway. So it's not just the new businesses that you need to demand an impact, a traffic impact study. It's making sure the existing venues like the Renaissance Festival and the ORB Park go through and have there, have another traffic study done to reevaluate now that the baseline has shifted. I think we need to start expecting.
Yeah, and don't forget, it, it's just funny how you don't think about it. So now we've got the four fest. All of these are potentially going concurrent. And then, come on, you guys.
You got the haunted house.
Yeah.
Right, so we have three big events.
It's just something we need to start to think about.
That could deter other businesses from wanting to locate on Dixie Highway.
Well, not only that, but it's, again, I'm not believe me, I, I don't know if you were here, I was all over Chip last month about the whole Perryville thing. And he made a little joke to me, but it was a way for him to tell me he's on that. Because I pretty much said it was unacceptable, the sheriffs bounce people from their own streets. But to, to the point that Angela and I were just talking about, and that is, the community's gonna suffer unless we figure that out. So again, just something to consider.
Yeah, because the bottom line is the traffic is only going to get worse on Dixie Highway as you get more development. So these venues need to make sure, as well as new businesses, need to make sure that for the safety of everybody, that we get the appropriate flow.
Well, and again, typically, that's on the commerce, not borne by the township.
Yeah.
That is an excellent, thank you, Jim. That is an excellent point in Angela for us to dwell upon as we go forward. What a, what a, what a time to be on the commission. So exciting. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Motion secured. Thanks for coming.
I just want to say, I really, myself, appreciate you guys taking it seriously.